We have part-time personnel in the summertime. That's what you're talking about there? Have we given additional consideration to asking for Wooddale residents first? Can we do that? Have we done that?
That's a good point. I agree, that would be a good program for Wooddale residents.
As far as the seasonal employment, we solicit employment from our website. We post it on the electronic signboard. I don't believe we can give preferential treatment to one individual, correct?
Can we put it on the TV?
Yes, we can.
Why don't we do that at least, so that residents of Wooddale can see it and be aware of it?
Yeah, outside of those three, we really don't advertise anywhere else. We traditionally don't take out an ad in newspapers. So traditionally, it's just really advertised very, very locally. And we seem to get a fair amount. For the most part, most of our seasonal employment are people who are in Wooddale, or at least the surrounding communities close to Wooddale. Bensonville, Itasca.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the... Oh, a question, Alderman Ray Wesley?
John, on Alderman Shaki's statement there. In Elk Grove, they did that, and I heard it was very good. And I... They're not home rule over there? Is there a way of checking to see actually how they did it? Because with the high unemployment that they had in their town, that's why they were catering... They were trying to help the residents in their town. I'm not up here to help Bensonville and Itasca, to help their residents. They got their own problems over there. But I want to help our residents here.
Mr. Kramer?
It's a call to Elk Grove.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's not going to keep us from actually approving the dollars, though. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Public Works Administration Department as presented. Is there a second? Anything else on the question? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Street Division Department. And are there any questions? Well, actually, there is an expanded request. And it is not manager recommended at this time. It is for an aerial lift. And I believe the bucket truck. Is there any discussion on this? Is there any disagreement that we definitely need to spend this $155,000? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Jeff, could you just tell us why? I mean, why it was denied? Because I thought the reason why this was put in there, and maybe I'm wrong, but... Because we gained more and more tree pruning. And the reason why we put this in there is to expand. You know, we could run two crews. And just explain why it might have been cut off.
I'm not going to argue against the truck. I think it's a good purchase. However, the budget is kind of dictating that it's not a good purchase from that hefty price tag there. So if you're asking me if it's a good idea to purchase the truck, yeah. Do I think we have the money to pay for it right now? No.
But again, this falls... This item could fall under lease agreement. Am I correct or not? Because that is a special piece of equipment. That we just talked about, NFT, opening statement today. And does that fall... Could that fall under there?
MFT has certain specifications to take the vehicles out of there, and it doesn't qualify for the MFT capital lease program. That's why it's only out of a general fund. So if you want to pay for it, it's $155,000.
But my question is, if we buying our NFT fund, a snow plow truck, am I right? An international? Maybe I'm misunderstanding the NFT fund here. If you could buy that piece of equipment, and you could buy that piece of equipment out of our general fund for equipment replacement. I always thought that, like, we did a sweeper, and we did the flusher truck. I thought the reason why that went to the lease agreement is because that was a piece of special equipment. And that's... I just don't... Maybe I'm misunderstanding this NFT fund. I just don't know.
Mr. Wilson?
You're correct, that it is a special piece of equipment. The one caveat that's not being said is that all the other ones were special pieces of equipment for roadway maintenance. This does not apply to roadway maintenance. This applies to trees. And unfortunately, trees don't qualify as roadway maintenance. So since it's not to be used to help maintain the roadways, it's not eligible for MFT funds.
Alderman Coles?
I thought, John, I thought we had a picture already.
Mr. Kramer?
I thought we had a picture already.
Correct, we do. Currently, the one aerial lift truck we have goes to a maximum distance of 34 feet. The one that was proposed but rejected was a maximum height of, I believe, 63 feet.
Oh, 63, oh, all right. The other one was small.
Correct.
All right, okay, because I remember buying that.
Let's see. Alderman Ray Wesley?
John, you put in here about number of trucks from two to one. I take it each truck has two employees in each truck when they go out?
Mr. Kramer?
On a normal chipping program, if we're going out to do tree pruning, depending on what type of street we're working on, would kind of dictate that more. But traditionally, the bucket truck would go out with one employee. The chipper truck will go out with two. One to work the ground, one to work traffic control. So traditionally, on a tree removal, you're talking three employees. If it's simple brush collection, it'll be two employees.
Could you... Would you save money... If you had this truck, would you save money on labor of putting two people on a truck?
No, I would not save money on labor. We'd save money on the essence of taking out number of vehicles, because we wouldn't need to take out an aerial lift truck and the chipper body truck in and of itself to do that task.
Okay. One more question. Do you ever rent an aerial truck like this?
Prior to myself being here, we did rent aerial vehicles. I do not know their size. As of right now, anything that we currently... That we trim or remove beyond our capacity goes out contractually. So this would dramatically decrease the amount of contractual tree work that we send out, because it would allow us to get to heights that currently we can't do. The one caveat to that would be anything electrical related would still go to someone who's contracted out. Currently, with our Irma regulations, we cannot work within 15 feet of overhead lines.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, it looks to me the manager's done a cost-benefit analysis here. The cost upfront's $155,000. Then the cost of the employees per year to do this versus outsourcing at $30,000 a year. So it just seems simpler to outsource it. Plus, we don't have the liability. This is pretty high elevation, and takes a pretty skilled label first. Not that our guys can't do it, but it's also a liability issue.
Okay, well put. Is there anything else on this particular proposal before we go to the next? Alderman Caddella?
Yeah, I agree with the manager's decision on this, as much as I would like to revisit this in the future. John, with the exception of working around electrical lines with this... With this equipment puts you in a position to handle all other city parkway tree removals, or most of them anyway, with the 65-foot.
Absolutely.
So between your staff and this vehicle, you'd be able to do that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to see this again on a future budget.
Alderman Lewitin, is it regarding this particular proposal?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Lewitin?
John, just the thought came to me. You know, with intergovernmental work and, you know, intergovernmental sharing and selling, like, you know, with the Park District, you know, we have the crossing guards, and one pays for the other, and the other gets it. Is there a possibility, because of the uniqueness of this truck, that you would be able to sell the service to other municipalities? I mean, close by, I'm not sending you to Zion, but I mean, like Addison, Itasca. Could you work any agreement where you would recoup money on this?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer?
I guess, are you asking if multiple municipalities could go in on the purchase of one? Or are you saying, can we work with another municipality that may have the same vehicle and borrow theirs? I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Well, you gave an A and B. I'll go along with A. That's what I'm thinking. Either go along with another municipality to cost-share, and then... And then share it, of course. The other is if you bought it for Wooddale, and you had it, and you indicate that other municipalities could lease Wooddale's truck with personnel to take care of their high trees. A, it would give our staff more training in the procedure, get them to become more qualified experts. And second, it would create revenue to offset the cost of the unit. Now, I'm making this on a supposition that you can either shut down or verify. You're not going to be using this every day. It's going to have downtime, right?
Okay, now, even if Mr. Kramer was in favor of it, I'm certainly not in favor of buying the truck and then leasing it out or lending it out to different municipalities. I think it would create a lot of overhead, a lot of disagreement on damage to the vehicle. And then all of a sudden, we'd be doing that, and then we'd have to add another person just to manage all of our different agreements. So I want to keep it simple. Outsource it, like the mayor mentioned. Alderman Coles?
You're an insurance man. Do you realize what liability you would be putting on the city of Wooddale by sending our workers outside of the city limits to do work for another town? Our insurance liabilities would go sky-high. You should know that.
It's not going to change the worker's comp. It's based on... It's based on the... And the program that we have, it's based on total income.
Okay, let Alderman Lewitin speak. Are you done speaking?
I'm done.
Okay. Alderman Coles?
I think...
Now, let Alderman Coles speak.
And I was a guy that was on the picker, and I fell down. I would sue two cities. The town that I'm working in, plus the town that sent me there. Because that isn't my job to work at. I was hired by the city of Wooddale to work in the city of Wooddale. I think you're going up the wrong tree. I pass the one that... I pass the one that wanted us to pull the maintenance on their trucks as long as they could use our equipment. And we said no. So why... I don't know what you're talking about. You're out of left field. You don't let people use equipment. You don't let people use equipment.
Alderman Lewitin, did you wish to be further recognized? Okay. And then, Mr. Kramer, did you wish to speak?
Just a few moments. First, I would not recommend ever sharing equipment between another municipality. I've done that before at a previous place of employment, and it provides untold amount of headache on placing blame, who used it last, proper training, et cetera. Right now, we do share with a lot of different municipalities. Itasca, Bensonville, Carroll Stream, Addison. We've borrowed equipment to one another, and we'll continue to do that if we run into a situation where I need to borrow a lift truck of this size. I know the context that we can go to to get that done at a limited cost. So I would not recommend ever getting into a more involved agreement than just borrowing locally.
Okay, any other comments on this particular proposal? Okay, the consensus is to concur with the denial of the recommendation. Okay, next item is the expanded snow blower. And first, I want to point a clarification to ensure my understanding. Mr. Kramer?
I'll explain it real quick, just so everyone understands. When we had that last heavy snowfall, there was some question about what types of equipment were out there that could move 22 inches of snow, move it off the roadway. Our plows basically are designed to move about six to 12 inches max of snow, and that's based on how much snow is on your curb line. Anything over two feet standing on your curb already, our plows can't push it up and over that. Traditionally, you need a wing plow like the state or the county has. You'll see a mid-mounted plow off the side of a large truck that they angle off. That's how you get the snow volume up. I'm kind of running through this, because I know a lot of you don't want the education on it, but I just wanted to be thorough. So this snow thrower was basically in response to, there is something else out there. It is costly. This is something we could purchase for heavy snow events. This would not be used in a five- or six-inch snowfall. This had to be used in an eight-plus inch snowfall. Really, it's overkill for anything less than inches.
Okay, and then just to confirm my understanding of this, that that last sentence within the narrative... So getting this piece of equipment would help safety, right? Correct, that it looks like if we use our standard operating procedure equipment, it would create, when working perpendicular to the road, which presents safety issues as well as road closures? Correct, so this equipment would help eliminate... Or help safety and help eliminate road closures. Is that correct? Am my understanding correct, Mr. Kramer?
You're correct. Again, it's not for your small snowfalls. This is for your large snowfalls. I just have to reiterate. We can still use our normal plows and end loaders for those smaller snowstorms. This is when you get the 22-inch snowfall circa February 1st.
Okay, and then, is this something that we can use motor fuel tax on? What's so funny?
Yes. I believe it is. I believe it is.
Okay, well, I'm always going to support safety and safety improvements. So I would like to see us do this. And out of the motor fuel tax, is there enough money in the motor fuel tax to do this agreement?
Yes.
Thank you. Are we giving anything up that I'm not seeing? Is there earmarked money there for some other piece of equipment? Mr. Murmas?
I'll let Brad, or Mr. Wilson, speak to that. The reason why this was original denial was not so much for the cost, but because of how often the unit may get used. It's not very often that we have the 22 inches of snowfall. So nine times out of 10, or nine years out of 10, or maybe even more than that, we're not going to need the truck, and we're going to spend $125,000 on it. We may not need it for another 20 years. So it may be a bit of overkill, like Mr. Kramer said. So while we do... It would improve safety in the instance of this heavy snowfall. We're not going to use it all that often, if... At all.
Okay, thank you. And those are good points as well. I'm going to start on my far right and work my way down. Alderman Coles, did you wish to be recognized? Okay, Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the only streets that really had difficulty were the ones that were supposed to be plowed by the state. The side streets really weren't that bad. I know it was piled high, but the guys did a great job out there. So again, like the manager said, to use it for once every 10 years, in this economic time, it might not be a wise choice. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
My question is, if... Was this a wish item that was put in there then, or what? Because if I just sat here and saying we could use NFT funds, it won't be coming out of the regular funds of our city. And I, you know, our most area that this would probably use is in our industrial area. And if we don't keep that industrial area open, we ain't going to have any trucks coming in, dropping our product, and keeping our sales tax up in there. So if this... If you choose not to do this, I respect all those decisions. I'm just telling you that it must have been a wish item that he put in there then.
Alderman Police, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, if once every 10 years, $125,000. Sounds like a lot of money for...
Okay, Police. And then Alderman Caddella?
Even if it's more frequent than that, John, you said you might consider using it on an eight- or a nine-inch snowstorm. I mean, historically, that's once or twice a year at best. I mean, in some cases, five or eight years without one of those, right?
Mr. Kramer?
Effectively, the snow blower. And again, some people are confusing this with the truck. What it is, our current front-end style loader, this is a separate engine-driven snow blower that mounts on the front of that. It's not a separate tired vehicle. It goes on the front of our current end loader and future end loaders. Very simple mount. It would be used in an eight-inch snowfall, basically to throw snow. Anything less than that, it would not be really effective. It would be far overkill. We could push it for that. The real concern was, in this last snowstorm and in previous snowstorms, when we get multiple snowstorms back-to-back, we start to lose our distance between curb to curb. This unit is excellent at pushing those distances back to the curb. Our plow trucks aren't designed to move drift snow and freeze snow back into the curb line. This machine could actually cut down the curb and go through. So it would be used more often. Again, I'm saying for the seriousness of the previous snowstorm that we had, the 20-inch snowfall, this is ideal in actually cutting through opening streets with. We would still use this piece of equipment, I would envision, every year in some way, shape, or form, to open roadways that have gotten narrowed from several snowstorms.
Yeah, that alone could be very helpful. Alderman Ray Wesley?
Mr. Kramer, I condemn to your fight for this machine, but at this time, you do a terrific job on doing the streets. And with the snowstorm that we just had, I'm sure you don't want another one of those storms in your career with Wooddale, because it's very rough. But I think you do a fine job in just what you... With the equipment you have. And you should be commended for the job that you do with the city of Wooddale, and your staff should be very proud of doing the job that they do. And you just do a terrific job on it. But I do want to add in about one thing here. We talk about motor fuel tax all the time here. Thank you, Thornton Gas Station, because that's taxes that we're getting from there. So I just want to... That's extra money that's coming to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lewitin, any comments on this one?
I'll just make one comment, that I misunderstood what it was until John explained. It's not an independent motor vehicle. It's just a piece-for-a-vehicle. So in a way, that makes more sense than if it were a vehicle that would sit. And there is possibility of multiple snowfalls accumulating and making necessary to recapture the curbs. But on the other hand, I like what Mr. Shaki said, that most of that problem was on the two main arteries, that responsibility lies with the state and with the county, not us.
Alderman Shaki?
I have to say this. The guys do a good job, and they get the snow onto the parkway. This sounds like they're going to blow it onto the sidewalks, and I'm one of the people who has to shovel those sidewalks off. So I'd rather we kept it where we are.
Mr. Kramer, can you explain that?
Sure. I do appreciate all the praise, and I will pass that on to staff. They did do a very admirable job with the heavy snowfall that we had. Just to clarify, just a couple of points that were brought up, and then I'll stop on my big snow blower. But I really do like the snow. So if we get another 22-inch snow tomorrow, I'd be very happy. My staff calls me nuts, but I really enjoy it. So that doesn't bother me at all. So I would welcome any snow dance that you folks would like to do for me. The snow blower is articulating, we can put snow just about anywhere. We can shoot it as far as 50 feet or five feet. So really, we're not designed to put it on the sidewalks. We'll have a lot more control, more so than we do now. And one last comment, and then I'll stop. I appreciate, again, all the praise. I felt we could have done better in the snow response. There were some narrow streets for quite a period of time. I'd like to improve on that. That's kind of the reason why this is in here. My staff was heckling me when I showed them my idea. So this is more kind of my harebrained scheme than anyone else. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Tell him that you can adjust this thing to hit his front window.
Wow.
Okay, I'm going to treat this specific request for expanded budget separately. So I'll do two motions in this department section. And I'm going to make a motion on just this specific... Title here is "Snow Blower." For $125,000, not to exceed it, I'm going to make that motion to approve the request. Is there a second?
Second.
And included in my motion would be direction to use motor fuel tax on that. Does the secondary agree with the change? Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so actually, Alderman, I take a call the roll. I'm not sure how many that was.
Alderman Lewitin? Alderman Roy Wesley? Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
No.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Moingler?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Motion does pass. And then, outside of the snow blower, are there any other questions, comments in this department of Street Division? Okay, then, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Street Division Department as presented, with the exception, of course, the snow blower. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion... Oh, what opposition? Okay. And motion does carry. And with that, I'm going to call a five-minute recess. Committee meeting, March 17, 2011. There is a quorum, although two members are not present at the moment. And with that being said, I'm moving into the Vehicle Maintenance Department. Are there any questions, comments on this department? With that being said, and one of the seven... One of the two is now back, so is the other eight. So we're back to our original... Well, no, I just lost one again. Anyways, there is a quorum. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Vehicle Maintenance Department budget as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Central Services Department. And this is a... Almost a $3.4 million piece of the budget. It is substantial. And I know that Alderman Eugene Wesley has a comment on the tuition reimbursement, so I will definitely make sure I acknowledge him on that. Yep, and Alderman Shaki has a question. But I do want to highlight and make sure that it's understood by the constituency, the citizens, and all of us here, that looking at line item 49999, the sales tax rebate program. And we're looking at a budget there that's $55,000. And it's new monies, and it's due to the Thornton Economic Incentive Agreement. It was established on November 5, 2009. The economics of the deal, and this is whichever comes first, either payments over 20 years or $1.25 million would be the maximum payout to Thornton's. And this only applies to the city sales tax, not the additional 1% non-home rule tax. So that 1%, we're getting that regardless. The city gets that percentage regardless. There is the opposite... There is the opposite of the non-home rule tax, where there is a split after the first $15,000 annually. So the city's going to get the first $15,000 of that and then there is a split between Thornton and the city up to a cap over 20 years of $1.25 million. And if the $1.25 is hit before 20 years, then the agreement is over. Or if 20 years comes before the $1.25 million, then the agreement is over. Let's say we only paid out Thornton $600,000, the agreement is still over. So just clarification on the agreement. And what could have gone in that location is a strip mall bringing in maybe a couple thousand dollars, a couple thousand dollars a year in sales tax. So this is, it is a benefit to the community. The parcel itself would not sustain a big box store. It would not sustain anything of substantial income to the city. And I certainly do support this agreement. And we're going to start seeing some monies come in. We're projected, it hadn't even, the facility hadn't even been there a year and we're going to get $10,000 realized in this current fiscal year and in the new budget year, about $55,000. And with that being said, are there any questions, comments on this budget? I'm going to recognize Alderman Eugene Wesley first.
I have two questions. Maybe Frankie answer this question since he's familiar with the police pension contribution.
Mr. Vesta?
I'm sorry? I'm asking about the pension fund? Yes. That we, you are requesting, what are you requesting this year? Six?
Seven forty.
Seven forty. Could you just tell me, after we give you the seven forty, where we would be ranked in investment in our pension fund there? I mean, I just want to know how much percentage will be in place.
Are you asking for percent funded?
Right.
Our funding percentage is going to be somewhere between 72% to 76% with that, which is fairly healthy compared to a lot of the other funds. There's a lot of funds out there right now that are in the 30s and 40s. There is an increase in that account this year. Part of that takes into account the fact that during the downturn that occurred over two years ago to one and a half years ago, like most probably people's individual funds, there was some hits taken on those investments. The last year, we've had very good returns on that fund too. So we're hopeful that although this year does go up a certain percentage, that next year, hopefully, with the generous returns we've had so far and the active management, that increase will be tempered over the next year, so.
So we'll be at 71% funded? And what's the state requirement that we have to be funded?
Well, with the new pension law that passed, we have until 2042 or 2043 to be 90% funded.
So we're in good shape then, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Vesta, along those lines, that, yeah, the market did come back and a lot of people are back to where they were at 2007 now. But why would we then have to increase our funding when the market came back substantially in the past year, year and a half?
It kind of goes a year in arrears because what will happen is the actuary, which we hire an outside actuarial firm, we don't, I'm a member of the pension fund, a member of one of five trustees. Three people are members of the police department, two are appointed. The actuary that we hire that uses, you know, accepted formulas for figuring out that amount, he has to base his funding based on where the fund was the April 30th year preceding. Then he sets usually in October of each year, sets the funding amount. So that amount right now is based on what our fiscal year was ended April 30th of last year.
Okay.
We get that amount from him in October, provide it to the city by November for inclusion in the tax levy. And then that funding comes through the next year. Kind of similar to your real estate taxes that are always a year in arrears. Just ballpark numbers, and I know you're going to get to the pension fund, but we were down in the 14 millions range. We're now over 17 million in the fund in just over a year, so it's coming along.
Sure, so then we would expect that next year, we'll be funding less than 740,000?
I don't, I'm not going to sit here and promise it'll be less, but the returns that we've had certainly are going to help that and help, you know, set off any decreases. There's some new funding that, or some new legislation that passed also that any future hires, that'll certainly be affected. And the change to the funding formula, meaning not having to be 100% funded by 2033 anymore and only having to be 90% funded by 20, early in the 2040s. I can't remember the year off the top of my head. That's going to hopefully help to decrease that cost too. So I can't say it's going to be less because that's, we have to follow what the actuary says. But certainly, conditions are good now that we've come along and recouped a lot of some of the downturn in the market. And also, there's a new, going to be a new funding formula out there for next year when we come back to you.
Sure, so along the lines of the new hires, will they actually be responsible to contribute more of their own monies towards the fund or just high level?
It's a new total maximum benefit based on certain years of service and that. But right now, the amount that each sworn police officer contributes to their pension fund is 9.91%.
Okay.
So out of all their pay, it comes out 9.91% plus social security at 6.2% for every police officer we have. So about 16% of each police officer's pay comes right off the top of their, before federal taxes are taken out in the other, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thing on the funding percentage, I know you can get a little hinky, you know, here in only 70% or whatever. The way the actuarial funding is set up is to be to what was going to be 100% in 2033 and now the 90% in the early 40s. So it's set up to get to 100%. So while it might only be 72 or 73% now, it's, they have everything built in to get to whatever magic number they need to get to. And so that's another reason why this number shot up pretty significantly with the downturn last year is to try and augment that loss to still get to that magic number in the future, to try and catch it up, so.
Slowly ratcheting up and then also looking backwards and combo. Okay, thank you. I'm going to start to my far right and go down the row here, Alderman Holes?
All right. I don't know, some people don't know how it works. But down in southern Illinois, there's some police pensions that are only funded about 30%. The state of Illinois wanted to do, to take all the good forces, all the good pensions, put them all together and get up a total and that would be the total that everybody would donate to the one pension. And the state senator said, no, no deal. And we're very fortunate that we have our pension and the police department is very, very well-funded. Some of them only have 30%. And so that's from good bookkeeping, good investing and everything else. So I got to give them credit of the amount of money they have in there and the way they use it.
Alderman Shaki, do you wish to comment on any part of the Central Services Department?
Yeah, the contractual services, if I may.
Okay.
The referendum we have coming up says that the winter months, the monthly terms from the supplier we hire will be posted and will never exceed Nycor's monthly prices, right? Unless the people opt out with that referendum.
Comment, do you mean? Comment, do you mean? It's the electric company.
Oh, okay. The reason I'm asking, just, I'd still like to know, with Nycor, do we do anything with-